Good evening and welcome to tonight's midsummer Board of Education meeting, regular scheduled Board of Education meeting. If you'd please turn off your cell phones for the few people and board members like me. Turn it off and please join me in saying, "Pledge allegiance." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, and thanks for coming out on this wonderful evening. We should be having this meeting outside.
(laughing).
Somebody want to propose a resolution tonight?
Yes.[43.12][43.12](laughing) Okay, please call the roll.
Already President Wasserman.
Here.
Vice President Branstad.
Here.
Secretary Baker here. Treasurer Singer.
Here.
Member Fazee.
Member Fazee is bailing out his basement.
Oh, no!
Member Gordon.
Here.
Member McFarland.
Here.
We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. You see it in front of you, minutes from last meeting, some staff resignations, Bob Paris amongst the lists. Let me see this. Following several books that were presented for a 28-day examination that we heard about a few meetings back, adoption of the Michigan School Code article, "School of Choice," request of approval from the Board of Education to continue accepting non-resident School of Choice students. As you realize, we get the foundation grant from where they come from, not from our foundation grant, but it's incremental revenue. Two application periods per year from February to September, and there's no changes there of what we're going to do. And then some legal invoices for payment. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move we accept the consent agenda items 2.1 through 2.5.
Support. I'll give the support to Yvonne. Any additions or deletions, or questions, or discussion?
Congratulations to Bob Paris for his new role as principal at St. Charles.
Any others? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to Board of Education matters, I will turn it over to Mike.
Our first one, we're looking for approval on that you do annually for the Michigan High School Athletics Association for our four secondary buildings to join Michigan High School Athletics.
And it's fair to state, without joining, we don't get to participate in private even Saginaw Valley League events, and certainly not state and regional type events. Can I take a motion? And then we will have to have a roll call vote, but I'll take a motion in a second.
Are we doing these just 3.1? Or are they kind of a group?
3 point, yeah, all of 3.1.
Okay. I'll move that we adopt 3.1 as outlined in our agenda tonight.
Okay.
Support.
Motion by Scott and support by Pam. Any...
Angela.
Oh, was it Angela? Oh, I didn't look, I just heard. I'm sorry. Any discussion or questions for Mike? I have, I have none? Okay, well, we'll call, roll call vote, please.
President Wasserman.
Yes.
Vice President Branstad.
Yes.
Secretary Baker, yes. Treasurer Singer.
Yes.
Member Fazee is absent. Member Gordon.
Yes.
And Member McFarland.
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you. The next item is delegate to MS, M.A.S.B. voting rights for us as we vote on organizational activities down there. You can see last year was Dr. Kaminsky, and I believe the year before it was Dr. Kaminsky if I'm not mistaken, and Pam was the alternate. Solicited nominations, I received three. And since Mr. Poppy Cool says I'm supposed to pick a nominee slate, I did. And I'm recommending Scott McFarland as the delegate and Patrick as the alternate so we get some of our lesser experienced folks more involved at the state level. And Lynn also volunteered, and of course, in terms of attending things, you're more than free to. So, with that, the nomination is Scott and Patrick. And if anybody would like to move that and support it, we can go from there.
I move for item 3.2 that we nominate Scott as the delegate and Patrick as the alternate for the M.A.S.B. 2015-16 meeting.
I'll support that.
Support by Pam. Any questions or discussion?
Thanks for volunteering.
Yes.
My pleasure. Thanks for the nomination.
I got to attend.[290.83][290.83](laughing) Just a little pressure.
Can you just put on your resume?
No time to withdraw, the motion's in.[298.52][298.52](laughing) Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. I'll turn it to Mike.
We're looking for the approval for our control system contractor. I think FFO heard a long explanation of the process we went through on the control system, and I think Barton Mall put a nice program together where we are going to make the recommendation that we go with Metro Controls, a little bitter on it, but there's a little more to it why we're going with that as well. And at this point, the controls is for the middle school boiler units. And as we go through this project, they did such a nice job that we can possibly use Metro Controls for all of our controls, or we can decide somewhere down the line that we could have Metro Controls do our middle schools and another organization do our high schools, which gives you more flexibility as we go, because one of the things that you worry about with control systems is one single company owning you. And so Barton Mall did a very nice job, and Metro Controls was a little better, plus probably our first choice anyway, so.
I'd open to a motion, we can have some discussion. Care to move?
I move that we accept item 3.3, the low bid of Metro Controls for $31,045 for software install and middle school boiler controls.
Support?
Support.
Move by Yvonne, support by Scott. I'll ask for comment or questions.
Well, I mean, we sat through it, and I really appreciated. They took us through the methodology that they used to really evaluate from, I think, quite a large list down to a smaller list, and then delved even further into that. So, based on everything they showed, I'm very comfortable with this recommendation.
I was impressed with the spreadsheet. They showed us just all the different vendors, and they didn't just look at what we're purchasing this time, but they looked at the cost of what we're purchasing as well as replacement parts down the road, and really itemizing everything from a valve to sensors. And I really felt like they were very detailed and looked at and overturned every rock and really got us good information so that we could make a good decision. But the thing I liked the best about it is the control and the ease of use and not really looking at what has been around with legacy systems, but it just really looked new and easy to use, and I think it'll be great for the district.
Yeah, my comments at the same meeting was the ease of use looked very good. Some of these can be very complicated, having bought them for the industrial setting. I was very pleased with the ease of use and understandability by people who are not control professionals. I mean, that's what you got to have. Second, I was really concerned about the sustainability of both the vendor and the underlying software provider. The underlying software provider was United Technologies. I am now worried about their long-term viability in this space. They may not be the owner of it six years from now, but someone's going to own their proprietary software and continue to market and sell it. So I'm not worried that we're going to buy something that we're not going to be able to get, I'll call, updated, serviced, or be a albatross five and six years from now. And the financial stability of both are very good, so I'm feeling really good. And to Mike's point, what I liked is we're not married, we can be married to the hip if the engagement period goes well, and if it doesn't go well, we don't have to be. And that's good. That keeps the negotiating pressure there, and it keeps us from having to guess who to buy today that we may wish six years from now we didn't have. So it gives us that option down the road.
Okay, any other questions or comments? That being said, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mike, back to you.
Board approval for the computer carts, complete purchases for the middle schools, updated technology in the classroom for our students. And so this portion is the computer carts that will, that will store the units as well as charge them overnight for student use.
I'll accept a motion first.
I move we accept item 3.4, middle school, for the purchase of middle school computer carts. Support?
Move by Angela, support by Lynn. Questions or comments?
Looks like a good move. Well, two carts per classroom for both middle schools, and it looks like the recharging technology has improved and we'll be saving energy costs utilizing these carts as well.
Again, it's a nice infrastructure project versus device project. And, and secondly, I was struck, I was interviewed by a person going for their Eagle Scout for their citizenship with a community merit badge. And the young man had questions ready. His very first question, I'm expecting him right on the school board, da-da-da, very sweet question is, "How are you going to make sure we have enough computers to do all the testing and our classwork during the school day in the future?"[616.12][616.12](laughing) I had a laugh. I mean, it was, truly was, his very first question. And this is an, obviously, one step of the enablement of doing all that, so. Okay, any others? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have our carts. And moving on to the next one.
And then this purchase, the previous two were bond purchases, and this one's going to be through what we call TRIG funds. And those TRIG funds were grant money from the state to make sure you are ready to deliver all that online testing and your Wi-Fi. And so the technology department is looking for, to upgrade the software so our wireless access can control all those computers that we're putting into our middle schools. And you do have Dave here for any of these questions, since I'm not the one to ask these questions, too.
Before we move on this one, if you'd please ask questions before we do the motion. Anybody have questions on the content of this?
I think this is from the bond, though, right?
Nope, this, this last one is software.
I know, but we're not to the last one yet, that's fine.
No, did I skip ahead?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I did.
That's right, I was...
We'll go to 3.6. We'll go to 3.6. You open 3.6, we'll go to 3.6, come back.
Okay.
So any other questions on the software one? That is our budget item, right?
That one is the TRIG grant funds, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So this software just manages, helps us manage all of the, the computer access we need in the middle schools with all the different needs of the devices, whether they're personal or school devices?
Correct. It does that in a broad, made of fashion, takes a little bit of air out of it.
Is the software too for backup purposes, or, or is it...
It will back up for those configurations and things like that, but not the actual devices.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? See none, I'll accept a motion for 3.6.
I motion to approve item 3.6 for the district software purchase.
Support.
Move by Pam, support by Angela. Any other final questions? See none, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Now we'll move to 3.5.
3.5. Sorry about that.
Well, no, and I was just thinking in order, since I had sat through FFO, I was kind of, you know, I should have listened to what you had said.
Yep. So we're looking to purchase the five servers with the bond proceeds to replace the five oldest servers, the virtual, in the virtual server farm. They've been operating for five years, Dave, continuously, and so they're at that age. Go ahead, Dad.
They're all, they're all five years old. We have nine virtual servers. We need five of them, four of them for production, and one for disaster recovery and off-site situation.
Okay. Any other questions? I just, I can make a point, I could ask Mike for it, but I'll just go ahead and make it. The reason we buy these is state law prohibits us from leasing under bonds, which is something we're trying to address, to say this is insane, you know, leasing could be, could be a better deal, may not be a better deal. I think this is fine, it's not a bad deal at all, but we don't have the option, if you're wondering why lease versus buy on some of this stuff. Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor of 3.5, say, say yes? Oh, I got a motion first, I'm sorry, thank you. I just looked and have everybody...
I move we approve item 3.5, the purchase of the five district, or servers for the district.
Support.
Move by Angela, support by Scott. Any other question or comment? See none, movement to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. There. And I'd like to just comment that all this stuff was infrastructure tonight. It's all backbone stuff. Okay, now we'll move into Board of Education matters and hand it over to Mike again.
We have on our website, and I think we have listed it for you, the, one, the generosity portion of our community as well as some other scholarships from outside, and the recognition of our students who have achieved scholarships in the class of 2015. And that, that list is quite lengthy, so we won't go through it tonight, but we want to recognize all those students who are on our website, and that dollar amount was $11 million in scholarships this year.
Wow.
That's amazing.
Yeah. So thank you to those who put on it, and what a great job by those students and certainly their families and their accomplishments through their high school years, and off to college they go to continue that.
Excellent. Thank you. Now we'll move to request to address the board. Roger, it's on you.[912.01][912.01](laughing) No comments. We'll move on to the next section of the agenda for FFO. I do believe we have study committee minutes from Pam.
I do. July 13th, the FFO committee met. Mr. Cooper reviewed the work done by Mrs. Lux on determining the district's cash flow low point that will occur in September. The current analysis shows that the district will have enough cash on hand and will not need to borrow. On legal advice, a second cash flow analysis will be done at the end of July. If conditions change, a resolution to borrow can be brought to the August board meeting. And we had a bond update. Mr. Dezek shared the details of three technology purchases that are in tonight's board agenda and approval. The three purchases included the middle school computer cards, district servers, and district software. The first two purchases will be with bond funds, and the third purchase with the TRIG grant money as discussed. Dale Jerome from French Associates reviewed the Central STEM Elementary School project. He discussed the earlier series of 13 programming meetings that took place to assist in the design of the new elementary school, reconciling the project budget with the programming document and the next series of schematic design sessions. Darrell Dombrow from Barton Mall reviewed the selection process of the control system and contractor for bond projects. This was followed by a presentation from Metro Controls, the selected contractor, on the capabilities of the control system. And we all just discussed and went through that as well. So the next FFO meeting is Monday, August 10.
Any questions? See none, we'll move, hand it over to Bob.
Hey, I have two items for information tonight, and then one for your action. First, I have gifts totaling $10,800. That's in the form of four different gifts. We have $1,740 going to Plymouth Elementary, in memory and honor of Antara, a paraprofessional with work there. We have $1,000 going East Lawn, from East Lawn Elementary Student Supplemental Education Endowment Fund. $3,000 is coming from the Dow Chemical Community Gives Funds, and those are going to Midland High in different areas. So there's three different teams that receive funds there. And finally, Boosters Club at Dow High is donating $5,060, and again, that's going to various camp expenses, scholarships, et cetera. The second item for information is a list of six instruments that you can see there. I'm not going to read through all of those, but very typical this time of year for us to, you know, people going through things, finding instruments they're no longer using but are still very valuable, as you know, and donating those to the school system and helping themselves. The item I do have for action tonight is the purchase of 85 Midland High music uniforms. You can read there how they're doing this through the Looking Sharp Fund, and again, why they stick with one provider, if you will, to match the uniforms design, all those things that go into it. It doesn't mention there, but so you know, that 85 uniforms is about $43,000, a little bit more than that, and that's coming from the Looking Sharp Fund. But that, that requires your action because of the amount of money.
Thank you. I'll accept a motion on 6.4.
Motion to accept the gift, and item 6.4, for the Looking Sharp uniforms.
Support.
Support by Angela, motion by Pam. Any question or comment?
Again, thank you. It's always great to look good, and it's expensive to do it, and there would be no way we could do this without the generosity from the community foundation.
Yeah, I applaud the, the band parents for, music parents for driving these kind of funds. You had the prior one and this one, and I would encourage everybody to consider potentially donating to that fund. You get the state tax thing, too, by going through the Midland Community Foundation, and it keeps us in uniforms, et cetera. So thanks to all the donors and the parents for driving that. Any others? Okay, all in favor of 6.4, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Move on to HR.
HR's going to be me, as Mr. Verlinde is now in retirement, so. Two items, the board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the family of Mr. Paul Concreit, who passed away on July 2nd. Mr. Concreit had been a member of the Dow High Charger staff as a paraprofessional for approximately eight years. He began his employment with MPS in 2000 as custodian, then moved into the Dow High paraprofessional position in 2007. Mr. Concreit was a treasured member of the Charger team. We also have Mr. Douglas Mason from Middle Public Schools. Skilled Trades Department has announced his retirement as effective August 34, 2015. And I think Mr. Cooper can tell me, tell us exactly, I think he was one of our carpenters? Am I right, Daria?
He was one of our electricians in the department. I couldn't tell you the exact number of years, but...
Wow. And our sympathies to the Concreit family. It's a well-known group of people in this town.
Mm-hmm.
You'll see correspondence to and from the board, you'll see our future board meetings, no special meetings coming up until next year, then we have to talk about next year. Those are tentative schedule, I'd ask you to put them in your calendars, and if you see conflicts that are going to be resolvable, now's the time, we might be able to tweak, if we can tweak, so get with Cindy on that. And at this point, we'll open a study discussion session, and I'll start to my right with Pam.
I know this week is the beginning of an audit, and the entire, just wanted to say what a great job the entire district has done on, on reducing expenditures in the district. That's all.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think I echoed that part, but for a different reason. When that came out that we may not have to borrow money in September, I think that's a credit to every single person in the district who did a lot of work this past year. Not looking forward that we were all working on next year's budget, but something had to have happened this previous year to make that a reality in September, and so thank you to everybody who put in so much effort to do that. And then the other thing we had at our FFO meeting, we had more discussion about the elementary school on the central site, and that's just getting really exciting, seeing all the things that they're discussing, and I'm very excited to see where that goes. That is it.
Well, I guess I don't have a whole lot, other than I, Bob Paris, well, we'll miss him. He's been a great addition to the MPS staff in the past, and have enjoyed working with him on the Special Services Committee, and so I'm sure he's got lots of exciting new experiences ahead, so I hope everybody's enjoying this summer.
I just wanted to also say congratulations to Bob Paris. I think that's great, I wish him well. And then I want to say also what Angela said, that's really exciting about the new elementary school, and also about being able to spend these technology dollars. It's so nice to, well, it's nice to know what students are interested in, what their concerns are, and then to know that, you know, it's kind of exciting, gratifying, to know that we can beat them.[1391.25][1391.25](laughing) It's a good thing, so, that's all.
It's nice not to have much to say, I mean, things are going...[1397.12][1397.12](laughing) The only thing I wanted to just add to the well wishes is to Betty. We do have a card for her, and on behalf of the board, we do all wish her well and a speedy and complete recovery, so, that's it.
This guy stole my thunder, there was a visy face in the audience again.
Oh, yeah.
It's Betty, and wishing her very well. Mike?
As I told Cindy today, I bet she's still watching the meeting, so...[1423.62][1423.62](laughing)
Anyway.
Yeah. On Central Elementary School, it's interesting you brought that up. Today, we had another focus group, so we had 13, and then we're in round two, as Dale would say, where the, some of the concepts are caught now on paper. And so we got to kind of see his, where he expects it to sit on the lot, and what it might be looking like. So today was a very exciting day. Well, you know, again, we had the teachers and the users of it, some of the office staff, some of the custodial staff, those folks in. Tomorrow's day two. We look a little deeper at some other things. Today, we looked at traffic flow and classrooms and the STEM rooms, and if I can remember what tomorrow is, I don't know.
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria, yeah, that's part of, that's right, cafeteria is the name.
Report.
Yep.[1478.12][1478.12](laughing) We're getting closer and closer, so it'll be interesting, the next FFO meeting for you folks to actually be able to see where it sits and how it's going to work over there as we go forward. Audit just started this weekend, I had a kind of a funny moment aesthetic, because I happened to look out my window about 8:00 AM, and four sedans pulled into the parking lot, and it was like in unison, so then four young professionals got out in their dress attire, and they all had the same bag where you pulled out the handle and set it on the ground.[1512.82][1512.82](laughing) They all walked in in a single line, like true auditors would do, so I just couldn't comment on that this morning as I saw them come in, so. The auditors are here and they are going through the books. Carol and Bob and the business staff, obviously, were preparing last week, and as I reported to you, some good news, and, you know, we adopted a budget a little over a year ago for the 1415 school year at about 4.5, I think, million we were expecting to draw, I think that number's right, correct?
4.9.
4.9, and we're expecting, I'll have to tell you, 500,000 to 600,000 is what we dipped in. And that is, as you said, every single person in the district looking at where we can save money. Lots of personnel we didn't replace, more people wearing more hats, and so what a great job we've done, how far we've come, and we're trending in the right way. As I said to you a while back, we're trending in the right way, but we got to keep watching it with, certainly we know we're going to get smaller as enrollment goes, and that's going to be a difficult one for us as we continue. IBPYP, as we were looking at the audit, and all that kind of stuck, stood out to us that next year those funds will be gone, just about in the spring will be the last dollar spent, and so we'll spend this year kind of looking at, you know, we were servicing it a certain way to get it off and grow, going, we knew that, and we knew when the grant funds would go, we'd have to restructure, similar we did to IBP diploma, and we're going to have to do the same with PYP, so we're in that year to study that, and Brian will put a group of users again, together, to take a look at how we're going to restructure IBPYP for the following school year. HR has, is excitedly looking at new teacher orientation, and what do we do with new teachers, and is that the best use of their time when we bring them in, and so they think they can do some new and exciting things. And as our profession continues to move forward, it's really about instruction and curriculum and how that movement's going forward, and so HR and the curriculum department will be working on this one together, which is a little bit of a new twist there probably for that day as we go forward. Cash flow, Pam brought that up, and I think that's probably good news, we don't know for sure yet, but, you know, we, a year ago, you would have caught me saying we definitely were borrowing, but when you go from 4.9 to maybe 500,000, it looks like we've been able to carry through that side of it. I think we have one more lean year, and if everything works the way we think we've structured going forward, if you recall, I think we're out of that lean spot, so we're trending and heading in the right direction on that as well. And I think that is all I, oh, the last one I want to mention to you is we have switched the name of that MPS Connect button, it was Talk To Us, and so that was the service that we got provided to us during the bond, and that thing grew where people are using it all the time for lots of good information, so it's two-way communication, just sort of us just putting information out there, asking us for information, and we're providing it to them. And so with that service being costly, and French Associates and Barton Mall had purchased that for us during the bond proceeds to help us to be successful in communicating our message, we've wanted to continue, and I give technology, and Dave, and I think particularly Jake Novak developed our own software system to do that. And of course, we had to use a different name, so it's now called MPS Connect, so if you hear of a different terminology, that is what it's like. And I skipped one other one I want to talk about, and that's the Science Center. And so we've been, if you recall, we've been getting prepared, part of what we call the warehouse, and where we're going to move the science for its final spot, time. So we've moved them a number of times with us wanting to get out of Franklin Center and use Central, and then with, once we discovered that Central, what we were going to do with Central, we needed a final home for them, and it's going to be in the warehouse, and it's just about prepared and ready to go, so you'll hear that as well, so go forward.
Excellent. Any other questions for Mike? Seeing none, everybody enjoy the, especially our staff out there. Hope you're getting refreshed and enjoy the second half of the summer, unbelievable that we're almost halfway through it already, and I hope everybody's enjoying it and be safe out there, because we want everybody back.
I can see on the back of school stuff at the stores.
Oh.[1778.12][1778.12](laughing)
It's not excite the Branstad children.
With that, we'll stand adjourned. With that, we'll stand adjourned.